Well, hello all. I'll let the last few hugs happen here and then we'll get started. Nice to see such a great crowd of beautiful people, particularly those of you who are sitting in the front row this evening. Nice to have you here. I will now officially call this businessman of the Kalamazoo City Commission to order for Monday, March 20th. And our first order of business is for our clerk, Borning Nicole Row. Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez.
Present.
Commissioner Prado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson here. Thank you, Clerk Borning. We start every one of our city commission meetings with an invocation. And we are blessed tonight to have Pastor James Harris, Sr., from Trenches Community Church here with us to get us started on the right foot this evening. So I'm going to ask everyone to stand, please, for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Harris.
Thank you, guys, for having me. Yeah. Father, we thank you for this great city, Lord, that you have caused all of us to come to, to serve you. Lord, I pray, Father, for this commission, Lord, that your will will continue to be done through them. Lord, you have given each of us a place of authority, an office that you have ordained. And, Lord, from that office, we pray that we would serve people, Lord God, and that we would provide the needed services, Lord, within this community. So we pray that your kingdom would come and that your will would be done on earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have, the next thing on our agenda is something we don't always do, but I think it's worthy of doing it tonight, which is talking about the guests that we have with us here. And first, I want to recognize the members of Delta Sigma Theta who are here with us in the house, who've also been sending us a number of letters and communications about their commitment to helping us with our efforts to address gun violence in Kalamazoo. So I'm very, very happy to have you here with us. Thank you. And another career I want to recognize is Mark Hill, and who's come with members of the Phoenix High School basketball team. And I know we're going to talk about that a little bit more, but we are honored to have you here with us. Please don't be a stranger. But I do want to remind everybody that this team is still on a winning roll. And maybe there's a couple other high schools in town that aren't doing quite so well, but guess what? This team is still playing. And there's a big game in, this can be held in Gull Lake, tomorrow night at seven. I'm sure you're going to mention that again, where I'm convinced these winning ways will continue. So we're looking for community support. That's relatively close. Sometimes these games are further away, and that's a short drive over there to Gull Lake. So I'm intending to be there myself. And thank you for coming to visit us this evening. We don't have any proclamations this evening, so our next item is the adoption of our formal agenda. Commissioners, is there anything on our agenda that you would like to see changed? Not seen anything? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to move any item from G, our consent agenda, to the regular agenda? Okay, thanks so much. See no changes? Manager Risma, any communications?
None tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Risma. Now is our opportunity for public comments. So public comments is a time during our business meeting when you can talk about any topic that is important to you, either here in person and/or by calling in. Public comments is not a time where we have a debate or a discussion, but it's a time for you to share your thoughts and concerns, not only with the city commission, but with the community at large. Anyone who's here, obviously anybody who's watching online. So for our public comments, I'm going to ask people who are in the chambers here to come up first, anyone who'd like to make a public comment. And then we'll give an opportunity for anyone who's called in to make a comment. The number to call in is eight, 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 three, eight, two, nine, five, five, six. So you can start calling that number now if you'd like. And we'll start with individuals in the chambers. Once you make your comments, you can sign in over here, but please come forward. You'll have three minutes. Please give us your name and where you live in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Ann Quinette Wilbon, and I'm the Executive Director of New Genesis. Address 1225 West Patterson. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, City of Kalamazoo, and all of you for our proposed project, for approval of the proposed project. And then, just to let everyone else know what was approved. So we're really excited about a program that we have. Through our past program, and the program is to provide job training to homeless and at-risk for homeless. We've partnered with several different organizations, but one being the Kalamazoo Gospel Mission. And so we're excited to start this program. It is for CDA, which is a certification in Childhood Development Association, CDA. Thank you. And it's to help. There are many barriers to homeless, and people aren't always homeless because of addictions or mental health. There are other reasons that put people in positions of homelessness. So we're excited to be a part of the continuum of care. There are a lot of businesses, a lot of organizations, and a lot of people that are helping the City of Kalamazoo address homeless, and we're just one of them. And with our project, it's for job training. And so at this time, I want to remember my notes, but some information was passed out to everyone. If they have questions about how the support, some of the partners, and how we plan to do our project. So I wanted to take an opportunity to thank you. Have like a few minutes for any questions.
I think we're set. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Next, please.
My name is Jim Hess. My official duty title is I'm Commissioner Hess's husband, is what I'm known for. I had the real honor tonight to have dinner with a fantastic group of young men from Phoenix High School. And they are going to make us all proud tomorrow. And they've done a fantastic job all year. And I hope we all can get there to cheer them on. And Principal Hill was going to come up and just say a few words and tell you about the fellas.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Yes, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Anderson and Commissioners. It's great to see you all. And I have with me Coach Quay Wilson. If you would please stand in the Phoenix High School basketball team. Why don't you all please stand? This is the first time in Phoenix High School history that we have... This is the first time in Phoenix High School history that we've won regional championships. So we've bypassed our district ranking as district champs and regional champs now, and we go into the quarterfinals tomorrow. And so the young men are staying humble. They came out of a tough practice today, and we had dinner. And many times throughout the year, you find me and my student ambassadors and athletes at community events. And this is an opportunity for the community to wrap your arms around these young men and coming out to Gull Lake High School tomorrow, 7:00 PM, and be a support to Phoenix High School. I would be appreciative, and I'm sure these young men and Coach Quay would be appreciative. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Oh, boy, I got to follow those winners. Good evening, members of the Kalamazoo City Council. My name is Tom Homer, and I'm a resident of Westnich Hill. My wife and I also own a couple of businesses downtown. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the proposed city-funded Cannabis Chamber of Commerce and the use of existing cannabis tax revenue to fund it. As many people here know, I'm a big advocate for common sense, hard work, getting things done. I believe in supporting local businesses and entrepreneurs and those that are willing to take the risks and create jobs in our city. I'm also a big fan of the City of Kalamazoo and its unrealized potential. I also believe that our tax dollars need to be used wisely, and more importantly, efficiently, to benefit our community as a whole. On the surface, this proposal might seem like it has some merit. Cannabis industry is booming. It could potentially generate a lot of revenue for the city. If you take a closer look at the details, it paints a different story. Firstly, I wish to point out the cannabis industry is mainly comprised of moneyed interests, who also have major lobbying groups representing them in Lansing and DC. They have the resources and connections to make their voices heard at the highest levels of government. Do we really want to throw our limited resources into creating a cannabis chamber of commerce that at best may be redundant, or at worst, end up co-opting by the major players for their own financial interests? So we have to ask ourselves, is this the best use of our existing revenue? We live in a city that needs to be bailed out consistently by billionaires to meet our existing budget shortfalls. Is creating a cannabis chamber of commerce really our priority right now? Or should we be focusing on other areas, such as our crumbling infrastructure, our multiple vacant retail and restaurant spaces, and our ever-increasing homeless population, or public safety? Thirdly, we have to consider the message that this sends to the rest of the community in the region. By creating a cannabis chamber of commerce, are we really saying we want to prioritize the cannabis industry above the other businesses and industries in our city? Are we saying that we want to be known as the cannabis capital of the region and at the expense of our struggling small business sectors? And finally, we have to think about the long-term consequences of this decision. Cannabis industry is still new and untested, and there are many unknowns. By tying our city's economic future so closely to this industry, we could be setting ourselves up for many unforeseen problems down the line. In conclusion, I urge us to think carefully about this proposal and using our tax revenue to fund it. Let's make sure we're using our resources wisely and to the benefit of the entire community. Let's focus on supporting local businesses and entrepreneurs, but let's not do that by segregating industries for preferential treatment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Cooney, I'm a resident of the City of Kalamazoo, 619 Reed Avenue. The purpose of my comments this evening is to address the divide where Park and Westnich takes place. Coming down onto Park Avenue, there are multiple lanes. One of the lanes were always, of course, prior, used for just regular traffic. Now, one of those lanes are a bicycle lane. I myself have found myself driving in that lane and realizing that I'm in the wrong lane, and of course, I would get over. On February the 20th, I turned off of Maple onto Park in the process of turning onto Howard. As I turned, I was teed. I had to be cut out of my vehicle. I was not able to walk from that accident, walk away from it, but I did walk away from the hospital later on that night. So I'm asking you, as I have seen so many others since my accident, driving that lane, realizing that they're in the wrong lane, to please erect something to let those coming down off of Westnich onto Park know immediately. I was blessed. The next person may not be as blessed as I was. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, next, please.
Mayor Anderson, distinguished city commissioners, honored guests, good evening. I think all members of coming up here now. My name is Tracy Morton, and I am the President of the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. It is a pleasure to be here with you this evening. And as you can see, our members are behind me. Delta Sigma Theta was founded in 1913 by 22 collegiate members at Howard University to promote academic excellence and to help people in need. Later, almost 110 years later, we still carry the torch of service, scholarship, social action, and sisterhood. Here in Kalamazoo, we have 85 members of diverse backgrounds and education, including judges, chemists, educators, directors of community organizations, physical therapists, and I could go on, but I know we're leaving in time. Today, we join you in public, and some of us are virtual, just to make sure that we acknowledge the work that you're doing and to let you know that we are in a position to collaborate, to help solve some of the situations that are here in Kalamazoo. And today, we call this Delta Days at the Local Government. It aligns with Delta Days at the United Nations, which was last week, and Delta Days at the Nations Capitol, which is in a few days. So we are committed to the growth of this community, collaborating with community organizations, and equity in this community. And lastly, as a nonpartisan organization, we will celebrate 50 years of public service in June, actually, June 23rd of 2023. And we hope that each and every one of you will help us celebrate that occasion. So thank you for the acknowledgement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of you coming here this evening.
Hello, everyone. Commissioner, Vice Mayor, Mayor Anderson, and Commissioners. My name is Gwendolyn Hooker. I am a Northside resident. And I am here today for two things, and I'm trying to do it real quick. The first one is our sixth annual Youth Connect event is March the 29th at the Douglas Community Association. It is our sixth annual event, excuse me. And it is basically, you know, an opportunity for youth-serving organizations to come to one place over spring break and provide services to school-aged youth of Kalamazoo County. And I would love to see any and all of your smiling faces. It's from 3:00 to 6:30 Wednesday, March the 29th. And I do have some flyers as well that I'll give to the clerk to pass along. Also, I have a question. And I don't know if there's going to be an opportunity to pose any, to pose my questions after the regular agenda? Or is this the best time to ask questions that are on the regular agenda?
If it's on the regular agenda, you'll have an opportunity to comment on that item at that time as well.
So I could do both if I really wanted to, but I'll save, I'll save my comments after, after the regular agenda and see if any of my questions are answered at that time. Thank you so much, and you all have a blessed evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a public comment this evening? Senior and Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, has anybody called in with a public comment? We'll check. Go ahead, you're live with the Kalamazoo City Commission.
Hi, my name is Audrey. I'm a mother of two in Kalamazoo. I wanted to ask about the solar-powered air quality sensors that are going to detect five types of pollution that were reported by M. Live in the March 17th article about this initiative happening in Kalamazoo. City staff and Commissioners, could you comment on any oversight or monitoring or any instances of reporting about the allied Superfund site as far as PCB particulates in the air impacting lifetime health of people in Kalamazoo? And will these sensors address and monitor these types of particulates in particular? Because they weren't mentioned or specified as part of something that would be monitored by these new air quality sensors. And would this be in coordination with Eagle and EPA, which is specifically noted as needing oversight or being monitored by the City of Kalamazoo in all of the outreach communications, mailers, everything that has been communicated from EPA as to this four-year project, states that the City of Kalamazoo is responsible for oversight and communication? Will this be monitored in terms of the sensors and reported back to the public by specific staff within the city? Or are you hiring a new public health advisor? Will it be in coordination with the county HCS, Kalamazoo County Emergency Dispatch? Who will report back to the public when an uptick is monitored by these sensors? The project at the allied Superfund site is in year three, and I don't recall ever hearing it brought up at a commission meeting. Repeatedly, our city manager, Jim Ritzma, is evaluated and given, you know, great marks as far as salary increases, but under communication, when it's time to report things, often, there's no report under communication. So I'm wondering if you guys could communicate to the public what's going on at those sites and how these air quality sensors will be involved in the Superfund oversight that the city is responsible for in its eco sphere, in its sphere of influence? And all four new Beehive? But I also think they're really worthy, as citizens, of having this be on your dashboard to report back to us for our lifetime health and our children in proximity. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, you're with the Kalamazoo City Commission. Hello, go ahead, you're with the Kalamazoo Commission, public comment.
Hi, my name is Tina McQuinton. I was calling again, as I always call, to see if you're going to try to do anything about the flooding that's going to be happening pretty soon and the sewer backups that we get. You're talking about monitors. Why don't you put one in my neighborhood over there by the ponds and in our neighborhood and see how much contaminants come up in the air when your ponds overflow and back up the storm drains, which backs up the sewers? I mean, that can't be healthy for anybody to breathe. But yet, you stake out the last little green space in my neighborhood. But nobody knows why, because no one's told us anything as usual. I mean, it's sneaky, because you don't tell us anything, and you just, oh, you stake out this land, oh, you stake out that land. This is our last green space in our neighborhood. We do flood. And ever since you took away that 12 acres across the street from me to build KBCC Growing Field, now I flood all the time. It's not cheap, guys. If it was your home, you wouldn't want it to happen to you. You wouldn't want your sewers backing up, your city sewers backing up in your home and in the streets. You wouldn't have, want to wait in it to get out of your neighborhood, because you can't drive your car, because the water's too deep. Ever since you took away that 12 acres, the water is really deep now. And it's all over the place except for KBCC Growing Field. That's contaminated soil in that little green space next to me, just like every place you want to put affordable apartments. It's either contaminated, it's in a flood plain, or it's in a high crime area. How about you put some apartments, affordable apartments, in a nice neighborhood where people can actually have a chance to, to live and to live a good life instead of a life where there's crime so high? Why can't you share the wealth? Why can't affordable apartments be downtown? Why can't affordable apartments be in Bronson Boulevard area? There's a lot of woods there you can destroy, because you like to destroy green spaces and you like to destroy woods to build. I know I'm boring all you with my questions again, but I'm a concerned homeowner that keeps asking the same question of you guys. Would you fix your sewers, please? Would you fix your infrastructure? And not the water infrastructure. You fix the water infrastructure, but we all have to pay for it, because our water bill, my water bill went up to $125 for one person who works two jobs and who ain't never home. I mean, that's ridiculous. People can't afford this. And now you want to take away another green space to build in? When you have DHS on Stockbridge? Why don't you put affordable apartments right there? That's a good spot. It's all cemented. There's plenty of land there. You can build it up higher, and then you can flood some more people up. I mean...
That was the last call. Thank you, Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. I just want to thank everyone that took the time and made the effort to either come to the chambers and make a public comment this evening or call in with your public comments. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Manager Risma.
The following items are presented for approval this evening. First is the approval of a contract with Lopez Concrete Construction for the 2023 Sidewalk Improvement Program in the amount of $511,760. Next is the approval of a contract with Peters Construction for 2023 Sidewalk Improvement Program in fill construction in the amount of $524,752.81. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental to the 2023 Gasoline and Diesel Fuel Contract with Kalamazoo Oil Incorporated in the amount of $350,000. Next is the approval of a contract with Riley Construction Company for the resurfacing of Duke Street from Kilgore Road to Denway Drive in the amount of $249,310.50. Next is the adoption of a resolution requesting that the Michigan Department of Transportation include the structure on Crosstown Parkway in the local bridge program for the 2026 funding. Next is the adoption of a resolution requesting that the Michigan Department of Transportation include the bridges on Reed Street and Stockbridge Avenue over Portage Creek in the local bridge program for the 2026 funding. Next is the adoption of a resolution requesting the Michigan Department of Transportation include the bridges on Elcott Street, Dutton Street, Portage Street, and Vine Street over Portage Creek in the local bridge program for 2026 funding. Next is the adoption of a resolution setting forth the salaries of the city commission appointees, city manager, city clerk, and the internal auditor effective March 20, 2023. Next is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources for a grant in the amount of $300,000 to support the restoration of Portage Creek within boundaries of Millen Park. Next is the approval of a grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy for Drinking Water Assessment Management in the amount of $387,027, and authorize project manager James Baker, PE, to sign all documents. Next is the approval of an agreement for the sale of 60 West Crosstown Parkway to Crosstown Ventures LLC for the price of $1,000. Next is the approval of a quitclaim deed for 418 Hilbert Street. Next is the nomination of the following four sector representatives for appointment to the Foundation for Excellence Board of Directors. The reappointment of Alyssa Carroll as the Arts Stakeholder Director for a three-year term ending in 2026. The reappointment of Ida Salas as Business Banking Stakeholder Director for a three-year term ending in 2026. The reappointment of Alice Taylor as Neighborhood Stakeholder Director, Northside, for a three-term, three-year term ending in 2026. And the appointment of Jonathan Yarborough as Affinity Organization Stakeholder Director for a three-year term ending in 2026. And finally, the approval of mayor's reappointments to the following boards and commissions. The reappointment of Eric Stuckey to the Historic District Commission for a term expiring on January 1, 2026. The reappointment of Matty Jordan Woods to the Northside Cultural Business District Authority Board for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. The reappointment of Marilyn Pulli to the Northside Cultural Business District Authority Board for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. The reappointment of Ryan Piddelkow to the Planning Commission for a term expiring on March 31, 2026. And the reappointment of Jeffrey, or Jennifer Swan to the Planning Commission for a term expiring on March 31, 2026.
Thank you, Manager Risma. So Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 14 and authorize the city manager to sign... through 14 and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Cooney. Kirk Borning, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners, the items on the consent agenda are approved. Now we are down to H, our regular agenda, Manager Ritzma.
Item H1 is adoption of an ordinance authorizing wastewater supply system revenue bonds, SIRI 2023A, in an amount not to exceed $7,445,000.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
Uh, we do not have a presentation, but our CFO, Steve Asensi, is available if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. So this is something that was included in our budget?
Correct.
Correct? Uh, so this comes to us as part of that process authorizing these. Does anybody in the commission have any particular questions about these bonds? Seeing them at this point, is there anyone in the audience who has questions or would like to make a comment on this item, authorizing wastewater supply system revenue bonds? Uh, seeing no one. Commissioners, uh, the act, recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker, supported by Commissioner Juarez. Any further discussion? Seeing no one, Kirk Borning, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners, the item is approved. Next is item H2, Manager Ritzma.
Approval of an agreement with the Kalamazoo Youth Development Network to be the sub-recipient under state and local fiscal, fiscal recovery funds, ARPA, in the amount of $1 million.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. So is there a staff report on this item?
Yeah, um, our Parks and Recreation Director, Patrick McVary, is gonna come forward and, as well as Meg Blenkiewicz from KidNet.
Thank you, Attorney Robinson. Um, so we have, um, the approval of an agreement, uh, with KidNet for the summer funding for 2023, and I want to invite Meg Blenkiewicz and some of her staff up to give a report on the summer of 2022.
Welcome, nice to see you, nice to have you here.
Yes, thank you for the invitation. I'm Mike Blenkiewicz with the Kalamazoo Youth Development Network. My pronouns are she, her, and hers, and I'm here with my colleagues tonight.
I am Jaron White, OST Development Coach, pronouns he, him, his.
Viviana Carvajal, Out of School Time Program Development Coach as well, she and her pronouns.
So again, thank you for the invitation. We're gonna take about eight or nine minutes to talk about summer of '22, and then a few minutes to talk about '23. So, assuming this is us. So again, and then obviously you all will have time for Q and A. So just a quick, who is KidNetwork? Our vision is an anti-racist community where all young people thrive. And we get to that vision by having an anti-racist, youth-driven, high-quality, well-coordinated, out-of-school-time sector. We always have a theme this year. Our theme is building bridges to thriving youth. And we very much see summer programming as a plank, as a domino that has to fall in order for young people to thrive. And so the million dollars that you invested last year, and hopefully the million dollars that you are going to invest this year, very much leads to young people thriving. And that's what we're gonna talk about tonight in our presentation, uh, for '22, and then moving forward with '23.
All right. So within our collaboration with, um, the city, obviously we were awarded $1 million to support high-quality summer programming. It would probably help if I clicked through the slides. Um, all eligible organizations had to serve youth who lived in the city via 501(c)(3), as well as identify a fiscal sponsor, and agree to the reporting requirements. Within our collaboration, we were able to work with 55, um, applicants totaling a little over 2.1 million, um, funded 29 organizations, as well as 32 programs. Our organizations were able to staff or hire, um, 206 people, as well as serving 300, 3,390 So as you see, um, on this slide, this breaks down the number of youth that we were able to serve from elementary, middle, and high school, um, getting us to that in number of 3,390, as well as the number of youth that we were able to serve by a racial back, breakdown.
All right. So in this figure, you see that, um, for, we use the summer learning program quality assessment. Um, this assessment is from the Whitehead Center, and we, uh, it represents all six domain areas in which, um, our funded organizations score. On average, the highest score is a five. And when all of these areas are enacted together, um, we start seeing those positive outcomes for youth. Uh, on this figure, uh, you can see the comparisons between, um, ARPA-funded orgs that are cohort members and non-cohort members. Um, the scores for the non-cohort members are a bit much lower than the cohort members. And this is because our cohort members have been, um, using the program quality assessment throughout the years before, um, so they're familiarized more with quality with, um, what those outcomes look like for youth, um, versus the non-cohort members. Uh, some of the comments, uh, major takeaways are, our programs indicate that youth gain SEL skills, and this is our outcome, social-emotional learning. Um, our programs indicated being able to pay staff $60 an hour, um, or more help with retention and enhanced programming. And I really wanna focus on, um, really a comment made by, um, the commission in a statement about wage equity, right? And when, um, these funds were available for organizations, we are starting, we're starting to look at, um, for, for staff to really not have to choose between working where their passion is and having, uh, a wage that, a living wage, right? So this really is coming in into that, right? Going like, I can work in this, but I can also make a living wage. So I really wanted to highlight that. Um, our programs indicated that KidNetwork support was helpful. Um, and also, uh, looking at the eight weeks of summer programming, um, and really at the Kalamazoo promise, this was not, um, a high impact as this goal is really, uh, looking at it in the three-year plan. Uh, other, uh, major takeaways, um, organizations were able to pay youth leaders as well and create a pipeline for youth staff. And youth were able to take focus field trips, right, on those areas that programming for focusing on for the summer. Programs continue, uh, past the end of their typical summer program based upon youth feedback. So this is looking at like when schools are starting, right? Going all the way through the end of August. Um, and then high-quality resources were offered, such as food, materials, guest facilities, and field trips.
So focusing on 2023, uh, there was a request from the city to really figure out how we can maximize the number of middle school and high school youth who participate in the summer programming. One of our suggestions to city staff was to really get the word out about MyCity. The, the city funds that at $800,000 a year, I believe, from FFE funds. And, uh, because of COVID, the MyCity program, you know, took a little bit of a dip, which a lot of, you know, obviously a lot of our in-person programs did. And so, young people want to work during the summer. And so you're already investing almost a million dollars in a youth summer employment program. First and foremost, we really encourage the city to, uh, build awareness around MyCity so that young people can take advantage of that. We're doing the best we can do to make sure that, uh, youth, those ages 14 to, to 21, are able to take advantage of MyCity. We're also, um, working with other organizations to get the word out, especially, uh, with KPS. I just had a call with them today to, for the young people who they identify for summer school who don't enroll, we're gonna have a much more intentional relationship for those families, those caregivers, to get connected to the 50 cohort members that we work with, and obviously those who are funded through ARPA. So we're excited about that as well. KPS Summer School serves about 300 middle school and high school, that's their target. And so we're excited that, um, with the transition phase and leadership, we feel like we're going to go to a transformational partnership with the district, and that this summer's going to be a nice leverage point for that. We also have been asked to work with KDPS, and we have a meeting scheduled with them to, for young people who maybe, uh, have had some touches with KDPS and how we can do a much more better job of intentionally getting information to them about summer programming. Uh, and then just, again, all organizations will have a KidNetwork coach this summer, and the city, uh, really wanted us to emphasize the common evaluation tools, so you all have a common way of assessing quality, a common way of looking at outcomes, which is use social-emotional learning skills. That concludes our presentation. Are there questions?
Yeah, thank you very much. Any questions Commissioners? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think that's great work, what you guys, you know, have done over the past year. I, I guess my question is, out of all of the organizations that you've worked with, were there any that you ever felt that struggled? And if they did struggle that you know of, what was that extra support that was given to them?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Huge lesson learned, huge. The financial, back-of-the-house, capacity support that is needed in the nonprofit sector in Kalamazoo is huge, huge. Like, I cannot begin. So thank you so much for this question. Uh, and so the requirements for the financial side of reporting with federal funding was a heavy lift. We provided a lot of support, a lot of TA, a lot of capacity building around that. Uh, so I've been talking with one place, we've been working together, uh, the Justice Hub, I'm on their board, we're going to hire our first co-director, but the need for support for small organizations and for programs with the back-of-the-house piece, I cannot overstate that. So thank you so much for that question.
Uh, thank you. And so hearing that, um, and you're working again with the Kalamazoo one place, is that something, I remember reading, um, some, uh, planning commission meeting minutes a while ago, um, and someone on there had expressed the need for training. Uh, is that something that you guys are looking into, training to be able to help these organizations? So again, it's not just, because I remember when this came to the commission, um, some of us felt very strongly that, you know, we're not giving it to the smaller organizations. Um, but then again, we had to make sure that we were in compliance as a city to make sure that we were able to get those fundings and not, um, not have any issues. Are you guys planning on, or do you see in the future with your next round, um, of a million dollars, if that is approved here this evening, of giving specific training to some of those smaller organizations? Or is that what your co-director will do?
So that co-director is with the Justice Hub, which is a, a separate organization. So this year, we're, we are confident that all the lessons that we learned this year, we were able to apply to this year, and so we've gotten a head start on the entire process, which means we were able to, uh, already put out a notice for our ARPA compliance person of, who's, who's an accountant. And so that person will be on board, hopefully this week, if all goes well tonight. And we've got a webinar for folks who want to submit an application planned, and then once those awards are made, we've got a couple of other webinars for training, and most of it will be around the financial reporting. The, the quality piece, social-emotional learning, all of that, because that's what we do. Uh, they'll have a KidNetwork coach, it's this other piece. And so because we're getting out of the gate a lot earlier, and we'll have that compliance contractor onboard this week, we're, we're more confident that we'll be able to provide the training. And not just the training, but it's that ongoing coaching and technical assistance. You can go to a training, we call it spray and pray, right? All day long, but it's having that person there who will be shoulder to shoulder with you, and that's what we'll have this year from the beginning through the end.
Thank you. Um, I do know also, last year, within the application process, have we kinda smoothed that out a little bit? You guys, you know, you say you've learned from the mistakes. I know there were some issues, again, with individuals, A, not being contacted, or, um, and not being able to fill out all the information online, not going to the direct links. Um, how have you guys kind of worked that out to make sure that it's equitable and that everyone that wants to apply is able to apply and knows about it?
Right. So the city will pu, uh, do a press release and a notification, they'll put it on their website, it will be on our website. We're gonna send the PDF out tomorrow to, I believe it's 700 folks who are on our, uh, email list. We're gonna use our social media. The city will use their social media. So it will go out in all the means that we have. Uh, and the city is going to be a partner in that as well, to make sure that they're distributing it the way they would any proposal that's available. So it goes out tomorrow, and then they're due April 7th. It's the three of us, and Chad Went from City Park and Rec, who will be reviewing all the applications. So that's a, that's a change. Um, and so those are all the mechanisms we're using to get the word out this year.
Thank you. I think, you know, letting everyone know within the city that these funds are available. Um, I think it would be great to, again, we were talking about the communications and how we can really get that information out there, even reaching out to Channel 3, since they are our local news station. And, um, I feel that they should really be reporting on some of the local good things that are going out here. And you think about the amount of people that that news station actually reaches, that would be a great, um, a great place to also go and start and to see if they wanna start promoting things like this. Because again, um, we can have them reporting on the bad that is there, um, but then again, like the youth violence and whatnot, but then also show, hey, these are the good things that we have, um, that are going on in the city, and if you wanna help, then this is a way to do that by applying. So I just wanna kinda put that out there.
Sure.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you Commissioner Decker, Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, first of all, thanks for the tremendous job you did last year, great. Um, could you say a little bit more about that focus on middle and high school age youth? Um, I, I agree that young people wanna work, first of all. But, um, I was wondering what, uh, what you had in mind with that.
So, yeah, first and foremost, we're really gonna work with the school district. I do feel like we've got, uh, a much more intentional and transformational partnership with them to get the word out. We're working through the principals, uh, the middle and high school principals. Uh, we also, there are other organizations like communities and schools that have middle school and high school programs, and not all of those young people will participate in their summer program. And so we've got those connections made. Uh, we'll be on radio stations making announcements, uh, 95.5 The Touch, we're gonna run an ongoing commercial that'll start soon, uh, and we'll be on, uh, AA's Talk Show. And we have a new approach to our youth leadership affinity group. We've been reaching hundreds of young people who are middle school and high school age, and so we're hoping that they participate this summer as well. And we're really leaning into what folks are calling credible messengers, to have other young people that age who are to have other young people that age who are participating getting the word out to say, you know, it is, it is cool and okay to participate in a summer program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooney. Commissioner Prado.
Mike and team, thanks for being here tonight. I really appreciate all the, the heavy lifting you did last year especially. I was wondering, would you mind just sharing maybe one or two examples or spotlighting one or two examples from last year of some programs out of the 32 that, that you thought were particularly innovative or really seemed to have a lot of impact on the youth who were involved?
Yeah, so this is going to be tough. I should have prepared for this one, to pick out of the 32. We had some organizations that really focused on literacy. They brought black and brown authors in and exposed young people of all ages to authors that looked like them. And it very much aligned with our approach of mirrors, windows, sliding glass doors, that you have to see yourself in the literature for it to, to transform you and take you other places, right? And so we had a new organization who was able to really launch their summer program and they're ready to go again this summer. We had some youth advisory councils that had funding. They were able to pay middle and high school youth to be some of the change agents and start to do that work around community violence. And then some organizations that worked on the youth mental health piece. And again, were able to fund young people to, to do the work, right? A lot of times we ask young people to do all these things, particularly in the summer, and, and we're not able to pay them. And this was a nice way of being able to honor their expertise and their work in the community.
Another question for you is, not to put you on the spot with random questions, but you know, if you were, if you had a person come up to you, and this could be a question for any of three of you who are here tonight, and said, I don't really think this is the city's business to be investing these kind of dollars in youth programming. What would you say to them?
Well, personally, I would say it is the city's business. When we talk about some of the goals and some of the initiatives that we are trying to form within the city, I think about the youth that we have coming up that will eventually take on some of the positions that we have or some of the positions that we have, that we utilize to move the city forward. And so how can they be a part of that change that they want to see and that we want to see if we don't first show them how? So I definitely believe that it's the responsibility of the city. I definitely think that when you talk about our young people and how they view it, I think that they understand that when we talk about the city and the aspect that you guys come in to collaborate with us, they understand that they have a, a vehicle, if you will, that is bigger than them, that is backing them to make the change that they want to make.
Cool, thank you.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes, you know, we allocated a million dollars towards, and I want to be careful about saying we, because this is money, the, the community, it's the community's money, not, not the city's money. It's not Estelle's money or the commission's money, it's the community, right? And so being that the liaison between community and organizations that receive this money, it's 2023, we're talking about another million dollars. 2024, what happens then? 2025, what happens then? How have you guys been able to leverage the money that we've given and that we're potentially going to give again?
I, I don't know if I can address the how we've been able to leverage it. There's a, it's the Michigan After School Partnership is the statewide umbrella. They've been able to, last summer, it's called 32N. There was $25 million that went out for summer programming. That's going to happen again this summer as well. So the work at the local level, because we share with our statewide org, which is the Michigan After School Partnership, what we're doing and the outcomes that we're able to generate, that helps them go to state legislators to say, we need to have more money made available. And so last summer and the data that we have was shared and I can't say for sure the degree to which that, that has helped the state allocate, but very much so, there is significantly more money coming into the out of school time sector from the state of Michigan. And our mantra is universal out of school time. You've heard the universal preschool, right? We very much want to move to universal out of school time and that's our message to the state of Michigan, to be able to fund that. And again, they've never funded summer programming. And last year with 32N, it was 25 million bucks. There'll be 25 million again this summer. The other piece I want to say is, we're funding programs. We very much want to get to systems issues, like we're looking at compensation, a liberatory compensation framework. We're, we're looking at transportation, technology and some other systems issues. That's what's going to really lead to busting down some inequities that, that exist in the out of school time sector. And we're hoping that the relationship with the city, and it's not about Kid Network, right? It's about the sector, that this, these partnerships help us get to address some of those systemic issues.
Just a couple, a couple more. The, you had a slide that mentioned you guys had about 55 organizations apply and there was over $2 million that could have went out. What happens to the other organizations that didn't get that money in 2022? How, how do you guys pivot to try to help? Because you guys had, what, 29 organizations you helped?
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah.
So then the other organizations that could have potentially added to the numbers in the statistics of the amount of youth you could have impacted, what happens with those organizations? How do we, how do you guys tend to, or how do you guys plan to adjust to find more money, not just from the city, but find more money to help those organizations?
Yeah, again, so I'll go back to the, the funding through the state. One of the things that we've learned, again, it goes back to Commissioner Decker's question about the capacity to apply. In the past, the only funding that was available was at the, through the state for out of school time youth development programming was 21st Century Community Learning Center funds. You had to be licensed and it was a heavy lift to apply and it is very much a heavy lift to comply. So the summer funds, you don't have to be licensed. It's not as heavy a lift to apply, it's still a heavy lift to comply. So we're working that back of the house piece and providing technical assistance for organizations to apply for state funding, possibly even be able to become licensed. There's funding available through early childhood for organizations who serve young people up to the age of 12. You have to be licensed. And there's, there's a lot that goes into that. And so we as Kid Network, again, are working with folks at the state level to figure out how can we, if organizations aren't, are interested in becoming licensed, to be able to access that early childhood funding.
So a lot of good questions. Team, any other questions, Commissioners? All right, thank you so much. Really appreciate you being present and talking about the great work. Thank you, Patrick McVary. So since there's no other questions, now is the opportunity for anyone to make public comments on this particular item. You'll have three minutes. Please let us know where you live in the city.
Hello, it's me again, Gwendolyn Hooker, North Side Kalamazoo. So I'm pretty sure folks here may remember, I was here around this time last year with some questions. And I'm glad I kind of waited so that I could get a little bit more information, although all of my questions weren't answered. So I'm trying to figure out what is the best way to get the information. My first question, I believe that you folks can answer for me, is the money that is proposed to be given, is this specific to community violence, ARPA money that myself and Commissioner Ray wrote a grant or wrote the resolution for? Is tho, are those the dollars that we're talking about? Or are these a separate amount, a separate million dollars that's coming from somewhere else?
Why don't you go through your questions here, if we can keep track of them? Do you have more?
I have more, but that's the first one.
Okay, I think, yeah, maybe since this isn't usually a dialogue time, why don't you provide us with your questions and...
So I have questions, okay? And I, and I guess I can email those to everybody and then between y'all, y'all can figure out who should respond. And basically, the questions stem from what I think was not the most equitable approach in the beginning from last year. Equity was not baked into that process. And people throw the word around, but you can't say it's equitable after you apply a process that's not equitable in the first place. You have to actually bake the equity into the process. And when, so I would like to see organizations, and, and I don't have a running list of all 55 of the organizations. I know numerous ones that applied. But looking at organizations that are led by minority owned men or women, black and brown people, people that are typically disenfranchised from the beginning, organizations that typically aren't funded for various reasons, various barriers. How is that information being gotten out to organizations that are smaller, that may not be on the radar? Speaking from personal experience, I never received the second request, which was odd for me, seeing how I was Justice Against Bullshit at school, was a cohort member. So just wondering, you know, what does that process look like? Is there a more intentional process of actually getting that information to organizations that are, you know, ran by minority owned leaders? Or does it blanket them?
Okay, thank you, Gwendolyn Hooker. So please do follow up. If you have a list of questions, please get them to us sooner rather than later. That will be helpful. So there was one question related, Commissioner Morris, were you hoping to answer that?
So the million dollars that was allocated for gun violence, half of that was allocated, $500,000 was allocated towards a group of organizations that were working together to work on gun violence. The city gave half of that and then the county gave half. And then we still have $500,000, $500,000 to allocate towards gun violence. This million dollars that we're allocating to KidNet last year and this year is part of one of our priorities when it came to ARPA. In our strategic meeting last year, we talked about those five priorities and youth being one of them. And so to answer that question, no, it's not the same money. They're different. But to the equitable question, I think some of the questions that were asked by Commissioner Decker and myself to understand going forward, how do we include those organizations that didn't get, that didn't get the chance to receive, receive some of that money? And the adjustments that KidNet is making and with the city and the adjustments we're making to make sure organizations get what they need that are in this sector? And so I hope and I pray that you're on that list, Gwen, and the work you are doing with the kids you're working with is phenomenal and tremendous. By far, you are making a huge impact. And it's one of those things where I think we have to look at because it's sometimes unique individuals who are indigenous leaders who can make that transformational impact in people's lives. And Gwen, you're one of those people, right? And so I pray and hope that you're, you're reached out to, you're emailed to and you get an opportunity to apply for some of these funds.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Any other comments from Commissioners? All right, anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments on this particular item? All right, we'll see no one else then. The recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hess. Further discussion, Commissioner. Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, you know, a million dollars sounds like a whole lot of money. But when you see the number of 55 organizations applying and in a total more than 2 million, you have to be very intentional and strategic about how, where you place those dollars. And I'm not saying that one organization is better than the other. I'm just saying being in that role as a lead agency on that is not an easy space to be in. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. It sounds like a lot of money, but in all fairness, it is not. And that money goes quickly. So yes, we need to have equity baked into it, but I also want to honor KidNet as the lead agency as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, and I think even when we think about leveraging dollars with foundations and, and, you know, the, the individuals in the organizations like the Kalamazoo Foundation, the Gilmore Foundation, the Striker Johnson Foundation, like to really see the work that's being done and how we can, you know, cast that wider vision, you know, together, right? Because I think together is, is more of an impact, right? And so I think for me, is leveraging the dollars and stretching them in a way where we can now prove to some of these foundations and say, like, there is a need, there is a major need in the out of school time sector, right? And with our youth, right? Mr. Prado says it all the time. You want to gauge the temperature of a community, see how the most vulnerable, youngest individuals are doing. And then you can say, is our city doing well? Well, are our youth being taken care of, right? And so, you know, like Commissioner Hoffman said, it's huge. It's a huge job, but a little bit of money. So we have to figure out how to leverage the dollar more, so that's, that's...
Commissioner Hess.
Yes, just briefly, I wa, I've heard here again tonight about desiloing. And, and there's been so many meetings I've been sitting with in the past few weeks where that's been mentioned. And, and this idea of collaboration and the city as a convenor and the city as a partner with all these other entities that are doing such great work. And I really appreciate your willingness and leadership in taking away a lot of those silos on behalf of the children and the most vulnerable of Kalamazoo. So I appreciate your work, Meg, and your team. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Prado.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to also go along, hit KidNet for your work. You know, I know last year when we were in the same position, I felt like we were somewhat rushed through that process. And, and you took it and ran with it. And just recognizing the urgency of the gun violence issue, you know, problem we had in our community last year and we still do, but giving our young people something positive to look forward to in their, you know, out of school sector periods and in our, our summer, summer months. I wanted to give an example. We, if you weren't watching our committee, the whole meeting earlier, or you weren't here, just take a second here. So there's a Bridging Opportunities Program, okay? This Bridging Opportunities Program focused on eight, only eight extremely high risk youth, okay? So when you think about that, you're like, wow, that's a lot of money to invest in just eight youth, right? But when you actually drill down, those eight youth represented 325 police cases. Eight people, 325 police cases, okay? So then all of a sudden, those eight people seem like a lot. They need a lot of support and wraparound love and support as a community. So they create this Bridging Opportunities Program, a 38-week program, a program the city of Kalamazoo invests in. Pre-program of that 38 weeks, those eight kids were involved in 161 cases in, in one year period. Post-investment in that program, want to take a guess how many cases those eight kids were involved in? Seven. 161 pre-program, seven post-program. Now you think about that, this KidNet investment of a million dollars, last year we heard that it supported 34, almost 3,400 young people in our community. You beat the math. You know, in terms of ROI investment in our young people, there is no greater investment we can make for the success current today and our future than investing in our young people. Estelle took the right for me. There is no greater witness test in the well-being of our community... There is no greater witness test in the well-being of our community than gauging how your young people are doing. And there was no group more disproportionately impacted by the, the issues of the pandemic than our young people. I am so incredibly proud of this work. I'm so incredibly proud that you, KidNet, are willing to take, take this on and make this investment dollars possible. And I really appreciate all you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Any other discussion or comments? Just want to make sure who hasn't had a first chance. Okay. Commissioner Juarez?
And I, and I do, I echo those comments, right, with, with Commissioner Prado and, you know, some of the other commissioners. And also to add to that, you know, there has been, one of the things I've learned over collective impact, right, doing things together, is that when we create a roundtable to have discussion and we start having discussion around certain things that have been in the works for years before we decided to create a roundtable and have a discussion about, then makes individuals who've been doing that work for years without pay, without recognition, without that-a-boy, they feel ostracized, right? And so I think we have to do a better job at creating that collectiveness, right? Togetherness and being okay with tough conversations happening. Because what it looks like for one organization to do work in a, in a, in a, in a part of Kalamazoo doesn't look the same as others, right? And we, like, you know, Von Washington uses this term, every boat rises with the tide when it comes to, when it comes to the promise. One of the things that I believe is that some of the boats that exist in Kalamazoo are damaged and they won't float when the tide comes. And so when it comes to how we look at collective impact, we have to do that with an open mind in saying, well, who are the ones who went before us? Who are the ones doing the work now? Who are the ones we can bring to the table? Where can we find more money, right? So it's a bigger picture than just to, you know, say, well, you know, this is where we're going to focus a million dollars, it's going to make an impact. It's much more, right? I think about Dr. Martin Luther King, man. You know, I had a dream, I mean, my goodness, when we can actually start having conversations to get to the root of things, that's when you start to see like, oh my goodness, transformational collective impact is more important than just collective impact, right? And so I appreciate the work that Meg and them are doing. I appreciate the work that the people who are, you know, not being lifted up and, you know, talked about on a daily basis, the work they've been doing for years, the, the, the grandma who opens her homes to the, the individuals who are out running the streets to use the bathroom or to come get a drink or to whatever it is, right? When Kalamazoo starts to care more, we start to see a difference. And so there's been people in this community that I know of, like even in my, in my neighborhood, I used to have this lady, we used to call her, I used to call her Mama. She was a African-American lady, Ode. I used to come around and hang around her house and she took me in like I was one of her own, right? And she used to feed me and take care of me and we used to talk, you know, and it just, that care has to go beyond just like what we're doing, right? It's much more, so I just want to lift those up who haven't been recognized and who are doing the work and who've been doing the work and will continue to do the work without the recognition, you know what I mean? And so, Meg, great job in the things you guys are doing. Keep up the hard work. Man, I pray and I'll be praying, you know, for you guys that, that just the floodgates open, man, because that's what we need. Money is a resource we need, so thank you. And Gwen, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Any other comments or discussion on this item? So I just want to say it's a, it's a pleasure serving with all of you and it's, by the time we get through these discussions, I, I would say much of what needs to be said is said and we don't have to all say it over again. So I, great team to serve with, I appreciate it. Kirkburn, please call it all.
Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Prado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The item is approved. Next on the agenda is item H3, City Manager Wismann.
Approval of a three-year contract with Waste Management Incorporated for loading, hauling, stabilizing, and disposal of wastewater residual biosalads for a three-year total cost of $39,652,000.
Thank you, Manager Wismann. So I, as you know, my stock question is, is there a report on this? And I concede, because we have our director coming forward here, that there is indeed and it is worthy, unfortunately, of a report.
Yeah. Director Baker?
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor, City Commissioners. Thank you tonight. So in your packet, certainly the, the commission action you have before you is a nearly $40 million, three-year contract for sludge hauling and disposal. There's quite a significant background, provides a lot of technical information that's in your packet that's in that report. And so my goal tonight is to provide a PowerPoint presentation that can kind of walk us through that a little easier to have some discussion. I'm joined here tonight by two members of Waste Management. They're from their technical team, they are here if we need to have any additional assistance. So just kind of getting right into it, our kind of goal in this presentation is to provide an overview of the wastewater treatment plant, some processes, and kind of give you some background of what we're talking about. We're going to touch a little bit on some of the environmental law and regulations that govern what we do at the wastewater treatment plant. We're going to talk about some factors that are impacting cost of disposal recently and for the last few years here in Kalamazoo. And we're also going to touch on some efforts that are currently underway to look at some future options for disposal there into the future. Also jumping right into the overview of the wastewater system, this is a, again, this is a large system, encompasses not only Kalamazoo County, but we also serve portions of Van Buren County. You can see there's a little bit of a green polygon that goes off the map, that goes over into Madawan. We provide service all the way there into Van Buren County. We also provide service via one of our partner agencies, Gole Lake Sewer and Water Authority, into Berry County. So that's all the way up into the north. You see Gole Lake has jumped out of Kalamazoo County there and it's up into Berry. That's also kind of the extent of our system. So again, it's a pretty large system. In terms of customer base, we've got about 25% of the overall structures in-city customers, retail customers. About 25% of our system is collective of all the township customers. About 25% of our system is what we call wholesale customers, so that would include big cities like City of Portage on their own and some of the other municipalities that we service. And then about 25% of our revenue stream is from what we consider industrial customers. It's a pretty involved process at the wastewater treatment plant. We've got some numbers here in front of you, some takeaways are, you know, we process wastewater from that service district every single day, including Christmas. We collect about 27 million gallons a day. That generates about 220 wet tons per day of sludge. In terms of like city of Kalamazoo-sized dump trucks, that's somewhere between 14 and 20 city dump trucks that we would have lined up every single day full of sludge and that sludge has got to have someplace to go. Some recent improvements that we've done at the wastewater treatment plant, we've invested considerable amount of capital to upgrade the solid handling processes. We replaced belt filter presses with centrifuges and that process created a drier cake salad. So anytime we can increase dryness, we're reducing the amount of water content and we're reducing the volume and the weight that's got to get hauled off to the landfill. So these changes that we've made, these investments that we completed just recently in 2022, resulted in about a 5% average cake dryness increase. So we've gone from about 17% dryness up to about 22% dryness. And so that, that investment saved about $700,000 per year. We're going to touch a little bit now on some of the environmental regulations and law that go into this. Just real brief, it's kind of the big overarching theme here is that we're regulated by the Clean Water Act, the EPA Clean Water Act. We're also regulated by what was the Michigan Water Resources Act, which is then was upgraded in 1994, became public act 451. There's a whole bunch of components to PA 451 and we refer to those as parts. So there's, say, Part 31, Part 27, Part 29, Part 41. Those each have certain rules and regulations that are all part of them. The takeaway is that we've got kind of an overarching permit known as the MPDS permit, National Pluton Discharge Illumination System, that governs kind of everything we do at the wastewater treatment plant, including some of our side stream processes. So changes to this process go through an established permitting process as well as some updates to our residual management plan and everything else. So there's some significant lifting within the regulation aspect if we were to do something different. I'm going to talk a little bit about factors that influence sludge disposal costs. If you remember, we were in front of this commission not too long ago talking about an increase in sludge hauling costs that went from, at the time, we went from about $4.5 million a year up to $9 million a year. With this action that we have in front of you today, we're now moving from an average annual cost of about $9 million a year up to about $13 million a year. So we're going to, we're continuing to move up. And so we wanted to talk a little bit about our, what are some of these economic factors that are influencing these changes that we're seeing here? I think so, first and foremost is that capacity inside the landfills is, is very limited and it's also very limited in Michigan. So that's kind of the overarching theme. The other aspects, we're getting more technical now, is that this sludge, as we, we haul it off to the landfill, that is really on kind of the borderline between a solid process or kind of a wet waste stream. So there's some things that we've got to pass to make sure that the waste stream is characterized as a dry waste, has a pass paint filter test, and it, and it does that in its, in its matrix, but it behaves really different in the landfill. It's almost like a clay or like a Play-Doh. And if you think of a landfill, that's something that needs to be very stable and it needs to be able to withstand a lot of strength and pressure and everything else, Play-Doh isn't a, a really good tool for that. So if you were going to build, say, a driveway, you want to do it out of aggregates and, you know, stone and gravel and things that hold together very well, things like sands, granular soils, that sort of thing, nobody would build a driveway out of Play-Doh and hope that it would last. So from a structural standpoint, there's only so much of the sludge that can go into the landfill. The landfills then need to manage that. And when they manage that, it takes a lot of resources as they've got to truck it to different landfills throughout, or what they'll have to do is enact a process where they would incorporate some other material into it. Another thing that's on our horizon, if you will, is the PFAS regulations. We just saw EPA came down with some more stringent regulations for PFAS. We've had some regulations in place in the state of Michigan for a number of years for PFAS since August of 2020. And so these things are relatively new and recent on the regulatory landscape and they have impacts for landfills. So at the wastewater treatment plant, where we inherently have a wet stream process and a solid stream process and everything that we clean out of the wet stream process so that we can put that clean water back into the Kalamazoo River has to go somewhere and we're concentrating that in the sludge product. And then that sludge product goes out to the landfill. The landfill is now then regulated on their discharges as well, so there's additional costs that have to go in to help treat that. So for a number of years, we've seen cost increase. We've gone, as, as we related in very recent history, $4.5 million to $9 million, now $13 million average. So we are looking at some future options. Some things that we'd like to look at would include, you know, looking at our, our overall disposal cost. So, you know, we can do a lot more things with our investment. We could do some better things with our $13 million a year than just haul things off to the landfill. We also want to look at what are our greenhouse gas emissions? What is our carbon footprint, if you will, but not just carbon emissions, the overall spectrum of greenhouse gases in terms of what we're doing at the wastewater treatment plant and then, you know, what our final disposal methods are. We also want to look at fugitive emissions. So when I say fugitive emissions, I'm relating to the odors that folks experience in our neighborhoods. So that's something that is a contributing factor from the wastewater treatment plant. Understanding, a few slides ago, we highlighted a project where we increased cake dryness by 5% and it was about $15 million to get there. We're not going to solve a $13.5 million, a $13 million a year sludge disposal challenge with a low-dollar figure. This is going to be a significant, this is going to be a substantial capital investment to the tune of you really want to look at some regional support in terms of doing this work. Back to that map, that green map that we showed you, that was a regional map. This is a regional map of partners. It's probably going to take a regional map to help us build through a solution. So what are we doing to get there? We're looking at issuing an RFI, a request for information. We're going to get that out in April. So that's going to go out, that's going to describe the different technologies we're looking for. We're trying to drum up some excitement around that and get some feedback and some vendors, some technology, some folks that have these processes to start to submit their qualifications packets to us. We're going to have our wastewater assistant city engineer, he's going to be down at a biosalads conference, national biosalads conference, to kind of be on the street when this comes out. We're also joined by Jones Henry Engineers and they'll be out to be able to attract and engage with national partners as we look to implement a solution. In terms of, you know, what are we looking at? We don't have a preconceived notion of what that looks like. We're going to accept RFI's from every technology from A to Z and then go through an evaluation process into the future. So just some next steps, kind of bringing it home for you. We've got the action item in front of you today. That is our best solution moving forward. And as I related to the something between 14 and 20 dump trucks that we'd have to line up around the block, there needs to be a solution in place. That being said, we're also looking out into the future. So we've got the action in front of you, which will be a three-year process that would take us from June of 2023 through June of 2026. And then we're also kind of starting the RFI's on identifying a future alternative. And so we haven't fully defined what that next steps would look like, so it's kind of a, a future engagement to build around that. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to engage in some discussion with, any questions?
First of all, I just want to say thank you. Phenomenal presentation. I appreciate it, very helpful. Questions for Director Baker, commissioners? Commissioner Prado?
Thanks, Director Baker, for the presentation and whatnot. And I also appreciate, you know, just reading about the RFI that you're planning to do in terms of trying to look for innovative or technology improvements to save us long-term and hopefully some investments will help us save, save dollars long-term. I guess what I'm hoping you can help me kind of understand is, I remember when, I remember seeing that supplemental in the consent agenda, you know, $4.5 million to $9 million. And my first intuition at that time was that, you know, that was right around the time that we had 9.1% inflation rate in June 2022, right? And I'm thinking to myself, well, that makes sense, right? Because inflation is at 9.1%, fuel costs are at record highs, you know, whatever. But, but the thing I'm looking at now is then it's like, well, we're talking about cake dryness and all these just initial innovations that are kind of like the equivalent of a giant container of laundry detergent versus like the little pods, right? The idea is, is we don't want to cart around giant laundry detergent bottles, we want to cart around, you know, little pods. And so we're looking to, to not just cart around water that's just dead weight, right? But relatively, inflation is calming, you know, labor is still a challenge, you know, gas prices are more stable. You know, I see that there's a lot of the regulatory things, but I mean, it just seems like that's a huge jump, you know? And so, you know, I just, I had a couple of questions just to ask and, you know, I know, like you and your team are doing everything you can to try to grapple with this and this, these questions aren't so much directed at you as more the, the companies that are doing this work too, to haul away. Is there kind of a point when it's more economically advantageous for us just to take this on in-house to do, even if it's temporarily? Or is it contractually, you know, just so the public understands it's more economically advantageous to outsource this? it's more economically advantageous to outsource this work?
So there's a lot of questions there, Commissioner. If I could just start maybe at the back and work forward. Taking this in-house is not an option. The city does not own and operate a licensed landfill. So I want to right now squash that. There's no in-house option here. The option that we have in front of you is to transport, haul this material to licensed, regulated landfills. And it's, really doesn't matter who drives the trucks, it's who owns the landfill.
Oh, absolutely. And I meant, I'm sorry, I meant more of a transportation component to it, but yeah, obviously.
Yeah, the transportation's buyer. You know, one other point, and I heard you say inflation, I think that's something great to talk about, is that while inflation is starting to slow, the rate of inflation is starting to change, no thing that we buy, no cost of goods or service, has been reset back to two thousand and nineteen levels. It's just not happening. I don't think it's going to happen. And even, you know, to the point of fuel prices, in the industrial world, everything runs on diesel. And so diesel prices, you know, just off there at the Shell Station, right on Michigan Ave at Westnidge, four twenty-four a gallon. That's a little lower than its peak at, you know, just over five dollars a gallon, but it's not two dollars a gallon. And when we're talking about loading trucks and hauling them to Detroit for a load, and then maybe up to somewhere north of Grand Rapids for the next load, and there's about seven of these gravel trains a day that got to go out, that diesel gets really expensive. Also looking at the landfill, just kind of going back to the slide of these costs, in the landfill itself, is that, you know, you go back to where our sludge costs were four and a half billion dollars, that was back before, that was two thousand and eighteen, in two thousand and nineteen, state of Michigan did not have P F O S regulations at that time. State of Michigan was just starting to dip its toe into P F O S regulations and really kind of understanding and learning the mass balance of P F O S in the ecosystem, if you will, and what to do with it. Landfills now have been regulated on their leachate, what they discharge. And so there's landfills that can't discharge to the pipe in the ground system of where they've been. They now have to truck and haul their leachate to other places. So imagine if you had a facility, and you had a pipe sewer connection like you do in your home, and then a regulation changed, and you can't use that, you've now got to trap everything and haul it somewhere else. And so these are how some of these regulations impact costs. And, you know, when they impact cost at the landfill, you know, they're impacting costs as well. And I will also say, Kalamazoo's not alone in this. You know, when we look at other wastewater facilities that perform this work, that have components where they've got to go to the landfill to land, take the sludge to the landfill, we're not alone. We're, you know, at or below market. You know, we see other communities that are paying, you know, similar amounts of this. So a pause there, just kind of a check in to see if we've hit some of your questions.
No, this is fine. And I mean, we've talked a lot about these questions. So I understand these questions, but I want to help the public understand these questions. Because when I look at that, I see four point five million dollars a couple of years ago. We're talking thirteen million dollars for this, after we just asked people to make like a record and, you know, increase in their rates, you know? So I want to make sure people understand how this all works. The other thing in the packet, it talked a little bit about how, it's not an option that we pursue, and it talks something about, I can't remember the exact wording, but it was something about a philosophical decision that has to be made about agriculture as a use for expended cakes and, you know, refuse, if you will. And so like, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that, about why we don't pursue that options? Do, you know, are there many communities that still do go that route? And just get your thoughts about that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So in the packet, it talks about there, in this industry, wastewater treatment plants, there are treatment plants in Michigan who are permitted and take their sludge to agricultural use. So their bio solids essentially goes out, goes onto a farm field, is incorporated into the farm field as an agronomic input that helps sustain crops that then grow and generate from that. We have not done that process. You know, there was a, there was a brief period, I think around two thousand and four, or give it, you know, for a few years that that process was employed. And there's so many things that are unknown with the waste stream characteristics in terms of what are we regulating today, what are we regulating tomorrow, and then what are those impacts to the public, or what are those impacts to the farm field? And I think we're seeing that kind of in real time. That's helped to inform some of the decision-making, you know, certainly around the wastewater treatment plant, and then partnering kind of with the industries that we serve as well. So we've gone through, you know, a really monumental change in public health in Michigan. We've, you know, if we go back far enough in time, back to two thousand and fifteen, the world was different before the water crisis in Flint. Before two thousand and eighteen, the world was different before the P F O S crisis, which came pretty close to home here in Kalamazoo. And so after you've kind of lived through and seen these different things, that, to our knowledge and public services, the city of Kalamazoo has had no interest to become farmers or large landowners for, you know, property all throughout, which we've now would have to own if it became environmental liability. So I think there's costs upfront today of what we're doing, but certainly there's cheaper ways to go about it. However, there's a lot of risk with that. And so, you know, not to go into a full dissertation of why we would or would not, I think we just remind the commission that if that was something that we wanted to go down, there would be a lot of information that we would have to bring forward and to look at, to understand, where do we want to go with this decision in terms of best use and overall environmental responsibility and safe community?
Yeah. No, thank you. And then the last question. So we had the rate increase at the end of last year, this is in the fall, I think it was October. You know, we had mentioned to the public that the goal was is to do this rate increase for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-three and through two thousand and twenty-four, so we wouldn't have, see a increase in, I'm sorry, there would be a partial rate increase for two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-three, so that we wouldn't potentially have a rate increase until two thousand and twenty-four rates. Did I get that right?
Yeah, just if I can clarify. So previous reports that have been submitted to City Commission indicated that we would have the rate increase that we brought forward, that wanted to effect in October of two thousand and twenty-two for fiscal year twenty-three, would be, in fact, through all of twenty-three. In those reports, and we've stated that we plan to bring a rate increase back for two thousand and twenty-four.
Right.
So, and that's still the plan.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. But just my question related to that was that, do you foresee this causing any need to come back and change that potential, change or potentially see a rate increase in two thousand and twenty-three?
So, no, we, there's no current plans to bring, because of this contract, to bring a rate increase of mid-year like we did last year. So in terms of the way this contract's structured, it is a thirty-nine million dollar contract, over, you know, thirty-nine point six, I believe, and it's over a three-year period. So you could do the math and average out like thirteen million dollars a year. The first year costs are about nine million dollars a year, and then they escalate after that. And so if we look at in terms of, we've already spent about two million dollars on sludge hauling so far this year, we would project to spend a little more than another seven. So we're really close. You know, I'm leaving off the decimal points of that just for clarity of our discussion. But broadly speaking, we're in the broad ballpark where we were last year. It's just that as we step into then twenty-four and twenty-five, we really start to escalate up. That being said, there's a lot of complexity with rates. It's never just one thing happens, and then there's an equal reaction to that. There's a whole lot of work that Mr. Ficenza and their office are doing to track, you know, where we're at with expenditures, where we're at with projects and things of that nature. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're clear in that, and transparent, that this contract is a cost increase. And so there will be cost increases in the future, but right now, today, we're not recommending the cost increase.
Yeah, that's what I was curious about, if we can, you know, stick to that plan without any mid-year changes or anything. I just kind of like end with this point. I think it was a tough pill to swallow for the community with the last couple of increases, and especially this last one. And I think it's an easier pill to swallow when you know that you're getting significant capital improvement investment that's going to last for generations. I think where the public has issue is when you see something like this, where it's like, nothing is changing for me for the future, for our infrastructure. It's just getting carted out of, you know, literally carted out of our community, what we're paying. So I guess like, you know, I guess my challenge would be for you and your team is like, go after the innovation and technology, to do whatever you can to really be an innovator and a leader in this work, to, you know, really drive down those costs with our, you know, creativity. And I think that we can do it. You know, I think definitely you and your team have done some great work, and I think if anybody could do it as a great model, that other people could look to, you guys could for sure do it, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner. I certainly agree that, you know, this is certainly a point in time that is going to drive and compel innovation.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Other questions? Okay, just a couple of quick ones here. So in terms of trying to lock in some predictable rates here, I see you've gone three years. So how do you determine that's the appropriate amount of time? Was that the only option you were given? And certainly, we will not have a fully brand-new innovative process in place within this three-year time period. I think that'd be unlikely. So how do you think about those sorts of things in terms of trying to, you know, basically lock down that cost horizon?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So certainly, we wanted to create a little bit of a wider span than we had in the past. And, you know, we don't like to bring contracts this significant to the commission every single year. That has budget implications as well. We're kind of rolling the dice, if you will, on the budget, where, you know, we were at four and a half, and then we came back and we were at nine. So that was a little bit of an unplanned event. So to the extent where we can lock in a bid in a contract term for several future budget years allows us to be more precise with those budget years so that we get that right. So that was, that component was important for us as well. There's always a little bit of a dance where, how far out do we roll that? And then we run into, you know, undue cost escalation because the market's uncertain, and then the vendors are trying to kind of, you know, predict out in front of themselves. So that's a little bit of a challenge, too. So a little bit of art in terms of, you know, where do we set it? Now, you know, I will tell you that short of some miracle, it is unlikely that we'll have some new ultimate solution built before it's time to renew this contract again. So I think that, you know, it's certainly important that I let the commission know that reality is that it's going to probably take us more than a year to evaluate what options are available, probably more than a year to evaluate funding options and priorities. And then even if we were to be able to step right into construction, something of this magnitude would take at least thirty-six months to construct. So there's that interval in the future that we're going to likely come back yet again to this commission in three years with some additional need to haul sludge to a landfill.
Right. Here's a quick comment. I know, I think there's a lawsuit going on, maybe with some folks who do own agricultural land. I believe it's here in Michigan, where sludge has been deposited on that land in the past, and now it's turning out that there's long-term, you know, polluted soils, basically, which is another whole piece of that liability issue that you have to consider. I guess the last piece of this for me is that, obviously, a portion of the strivingness is regulation, you know, which is fine. You recognize an issue, and you want to make sure that you're doing everything you can to control that. But it also, I would say, in this situation is really, ends up driving a lot of cost for local entities out of this regulation. Is there any greater conversation that you're hearing? Because we're not the only ones experiencing this in terms of what that might look like. I mean, there's literally systems that, over the course of time, may not even be able to handle within their rate structure, you know, a really significant increase in costs as time goes on. So are you hearing anything about that in the discussion about?
Yeah, certainly we are within the industry. You know, sludge is one of the most expensive endeavors at a wastewater treatment plant. You know, whether, regardless of what you do with the sludge, it's an expensive process. You know, City Detroit went through similar challenges that we are right now experiencing. They went through those challenges approximately ten, about ten years ago. So they were successful, and they've implemented a number of processes where the sludge is going off, you know, to some other end use, if you will, besides just going to the landfill. They still also go to the landfill. They're quite a bit bigger than us, and, you know, so the capacity is an issue for them. But yeah, there's, the other treatment plants that don't just go, you know, to the agricultural lands are, you know, facing these challenges. You know, and I will tell you that even those treatment plants going to the agricultural lands today, we don't know what the P F O S regulations are. You know, there's, the new EPA M C Ls are essentially zero across the board. And that's going to be a tough metric to meet for those, for those treatment plants that are currently doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for Director Baker on this topic? Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Very, very good presentation, and I appreciate the expertise you bring to the table here.
Thank you. Yes.
Now, is that for anyone who would like to comment on this item, who might be here in the chambers? Anyone who wants to make any comments? This is related to sludge hauling. No comment on this item, sludge hauling. I'm sorry, general public comments were very late at the beginning of the meeting. We're on item H three, which is a sludge hauling contract.
So my comment is dealing with the sludge hauling, not necessarily the sludge hauling, but the process.
Yes, yes, got it. Fine.
So I appreciate the presentation that has been just presented. But one of the factors that was shown in the slide was the emissions. Okay, so is that connected?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay. So looking at the map and the large area that the Kalamazoo wastewater treatment serves, there's still one area of our community that's concentrated, that continues to be impacted by the odor. And I didn't see anything included in the presentation that is aimed at addressing that issue. And so I want to continue to keep it before the commission because it seems to be marginalized. When you look at the large area that this, that it is serving beyond the city of Kalamazoo, this county, but one area, a minority, black and brown predominant community, is impacted still. And we don't know the health hazards that are involved in this process. So we need to keep that as part of the agenda. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sorry that I confused you there.
That's okay. And I'm sorry I didn't get my name. Lindsey Bell, forty-two oh five Kingsbrook Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Anyone else who wants to make comments? Seeing, Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Juarez?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Prado. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Cooney?
No.
No?
Okay.
Anyone else? Christopher Prado?
Yeah, I appreciate Director Baker answering the questions. I mean, it's just the reality. You know, I mean, this is what the market conditions are making it such to do this work. But again, I just applaud the team for trying to look for innovative solutions to try to, you know, cut rates long-term for the community. And again, I'm confident they'll do it, so.
Anyone else? Team. I just want to, I appreciate the comments from President Bell. And it would be, there's definitely work happening along those lines, so I don't want anyone to think there's nothing going on. Director Baker is very focused on that. So might be helpful just to connect with Director Baker here before you leave, just to, so that you can also be in that communication realm in terms of what things the city is working on over there. I think I agree it's very important. Kirk Bowden, please call it up.
Commissioner Prado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The item is approved. Next, reports and legislation. Commissioner Ritzma.
Just a note here that I'd like to recognize. I'd like to recognize our Parks Recreation Director Patrick McVary and his team. The Kalamazoo Farmers Market Phase One received the American Public Works Association Award for 2023. And it's based on the category of quality of life. So Farmers Market Phase One is in the books. And congratulations on that. And I just want to recognize, too, the work the City Commission does in all this. This is not easy work deciding on topics like, you know, a $40 million sludge hauling contract. But I just want to acknowledge the heart that you all have for this community in this, in this region. And that these are tough decisions to make, but they are the right ones. And we're going to continue to look at innovation to help drive our processes and create a safer environment for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ritzma. So next is an item of new business. Good news, new business, Commissioner Ritzma.
Item L1, approval of a recommendation from the City Attorney Recruitment Subcommittee to schedule interviews with three finalists for the City Attorney position. First finalist is Aaron Leo, second is Louis Smith, and third is Ivor Stein. And to schedule a public meet and greet session with the candidates this Wednesday, March 22, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the community room of the City Hall. And to schedule a special City Commission meeting on Thursday, March 23, this Thursday, at 10:30 AM in the City Commission chambers here at City Hall for the purpose of conducting the interviews.
Thank you, Mayor Ritzma. So comments from the subcommittee members of the commission here that have been working on this? Anything in particular you think would be helpful? Mr. Decker, Mr. Prado?
You know, obviously, I think it was disappointing that we had our finalists withdraw in January. But I appreciate everybody remaining very forward focused and just saying, look, we're not going to lose any time. We're going to do this with due speed. Get some, get this back out there. Get some more great folks in the pool for our next city attorney. You know, I know one of the elements to this is that we brought that work in-house through our HR department. I really want to thank Shelley Dusek, the HR Director here at the city, and Jeff Chamberlain for all their work for supporting the committee's work as well. But I think we've got some impressive folks that we're bringing here this week. And I really hope we find our next city attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. I do want to thank Mr. Decker as well. The three of us have been on this subcommittee. And a couple of people have asked me, well, wasn't that a big waste of time going through MML? And why did we do that? And why did we spend the money doing that? And I do not feel like that was a waste of time in the least. I think in this particular process where we are now, people could be asking us, well, was that smart to do it in-house? Did you get the kind of response that you, maybe you would have got a bigger response if you used some outside entity to do this. But we have proved that already. We don't have to go back on that one. I feel like we saw what occurred. We unfortunately have someone who withdrew their name. But we were able to really build on that earlier work and have a new group of people who applied for this. And I just want, I do want to follow up on what Mr. Prado said. Thank you, Manager Ritzma, for, you know, supporting our HR Director here to really take us through this process. And I think we're going to have some great opportunities here to make a decision with some, with some good candidates that we'll be interviewing this week. So any, seeing really no questions from the commission. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment on this item? So I'm not seeing anybody. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hess. Any further discussion, Commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hess.
I would like to thank our subcommittee and HR Director Dusek for the hours of work, hours and hours of work that they've done on this. And I also would like to recognize Attorney Robinson for his willingness to be on and stay on and continue to do the work of the city in the way that he's been doing for the past 14 years?
It's 15 and 17.
Not that we're counting. Thank you, Attorney Robinson.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion or comments? All right, seeing none. Kirk Berlin, please call it all.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The item is approved. Just as a reminder here, this is what the motion was, but this is happening this week. So we're moving right ahead with this. That means Wednesday this week, March 22, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the community room of City Hall, right here. There is an opportunity for the community to meet in an informal way the candidates for this very, very important position. And then the following day, Thursday, we will be having three in order, three different interview processes. We'll be asking questions. And there will be another opportunity that's obviously totally public. So anybody can come in and participate in seeing what's going on with our interview process. Busy week. Now is the opportunity for Commissioner comments. Anyone who'd like to start with comments this evening? Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that I appreciate the team here at the city that worked on putting together the presentation for our retreat. Again, I thought that was a great presentation. I enjoyed the retreat. I think we all enjoyed it and the process that we used. I appreciate us all beginning early with that because when we do begin early, we're able to come across with a mutual understanding of what the commission and what the city is looking for. So I appreciate that being done so early and having us involved more earlier than latter. Again, I kind of said this a little bit earlier as I wanted to drink, KDPS and all the work that they've done with the GVI and working with the Kidn and all these other organizations, KPS. I think that we're really moving towards individuals building a little bit more trust. And that's what we want to make sure that we're able to do. But again, there has to be trust on both sides. We have to be able to trust them. They have to be able to trust us and the community. And I think having these conversations, there's a lot of bad work going on that hasn't even been talked about when it talks about gun violence in our youth. And, you know, I can't remember which commissioner said it, but when you say the hours and hours of stuff that we put into things that you don't see, sometimes it's going to take a year or two years to really see that difference. And I think we saw a little bit of that within the difference in the numbers that Chief, Chief Jude, I apologize, kind of showed us. And again, also for us having that meeting at KDPS and kind of going over some of those numbers and some of those things and what they wanted to do within our city. So I just kind of want to put that out there. I think with our city attorney search hopefully coming to an end, we will be losing a good man, a great man. So your anniversary is March 17th, was March 17th? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Anyone else? Commissioner Juarez?
Yeah, you know, I was, during our break, I was, had the chance to talk to Jude and voice him there. And, you know, one of the comments that Jude was just, you know, reflecting on was there was a time in our city where they had this board where they marked gun violence at the hour in between, right? And recently, we just marked 16 days without gun violence, right? But there was a time where they were marking it by the hour. And so the impact that's happening with gun violence is phenomenal. It's huge. It's collective. It's community, right? So just imagine that, right? And just take that for a moment. You put it into perspective, into the minds of the, of the men and women of the police department thinking about that. Man, I just, I pray for them often because of the anxiety, when's the next gun violence call going to be? And we pray to God that it's not a stray bullet that hits a kid. Or like goes through a house and hits an elderly 50-year-old man sleeping in his bed on the north side, right? And so take that into, you know, perspective and then say, okay, the work they've been doing to not just say they can solve gun violence their own, but to say we need community. We need leaders. We need individuals who've been, you know, involved in that kind of lifestyle and are on the other side and teaching young men to be, you know, to, to show the perspective of what a man really looks like. You take all that into consideration and you see the work that's happening. But then if you take that and you apply that in that heart set and that mindset and that work that's together and you apply that to homelessness, or you apply that to housing, or you apply that to all the other things that we deal with, the impact that can happen, right? And so my hat goes off to the, to KDPS, right, and the work they're doing. But also to those individuals who are putting themselves on the front line, like a Michael Wilder and a Yefencio Harris and, you know, a Jordan Watts and these individuals who are going in, in meeting with these individuals who are driving the gun violence. It's one of those things that always, like, the Lord brings it back to my heart. And he says, you know, the individual driving the gun violence, that there was a fracture that happened in their life that caused them to be a certain way. But if we can see in, in value, the intrinsic value that they have, just by being human, changes the dynamic of how you view people, right? Same thing with homeless people, right? There's this stigma with homeless people. Oh, they choose to be that way. They're drug addicts, they're mental health. And it's a lot of things that are just like, if you choose to just sit and build a relationship with somebody, the difference that, in, in the way your perspective changes, when we can see each other as humans and start there, the work that can get done is amazing. But it's not, it's going to take the community. It's going to take the churches being the church, right? Because people are the bread and butter of the church. The church should be like the relationships, right? It's going to take businesses willing to pay livable wages to individual. It's going to take, you know, city government to make those decisions. It's going to take, you know, neighbors loving on each other, right, as they love themselves. And that's, that's the work that needs to be done and continued. And so I'm just, I'm very, very pleased with all that was presented today. I'm excited about what's to come. You know, we do have elections this year. And that's, that's going to determine the work, right? And so my, my hope is that we can see in what we've started, even as, as this commission is, like, that ability to make change immediately, right? So we don't want to get into the weeds of why things should be done or not be, or be done. It's like, it's not about who's right, but what's right, right? And I think we've, we've seen that process with us being able to allocate money to gun violence, money to all kinds of things like youth. The amount of money that was spent in 2022 and how quick that happened, the turnover was amazing. And the things that can happen are just phenomenal. I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Vice Mayor Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I really appreciate the work that was done on, on this and the follow-up to the retreat. And it's really ambitious. I think I'm, I'm very pleased to see the response to what we put out there as our priorities, that these are the priorities that we're going to work on. And they're the priorities I think that, that we must focus on. Poverty, youth, environmental justice, housing, these are the things that, 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 that we should be putting our attention to. So I'm really grateful for that. The other thing I want to mention is that three different times tonight, people have come up and said something about the pollution and the health damage that's going on in the community. And I am for putting that higher on our priority list. I know there's a lot of things going on, really great things going on. But there's more that needs to be done. People are getting sick. And we have to do more to define what that problem is. And, and I know it's not going to be easy to fix that. And I think, but the first step is let's define what is going on and what are the impacts of what's going on. And then how are we going to move toward fixing it?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooney. Christopher Hess?
Yeah. Well, happy spring. Hopefully, the, the spring and summer will allow us to focus more on, on the air and making sure that we, we fix that, that issue. And where is that really coming from? And how we can mitigate that? Got to trust our scientists. We got to trust the science. And we still look forward to getting a report from the MDHHS. A few weeks ago, we did talk about Oberon Day. I believe that our City Hall is lit up in orange and blue. Should be to honor bells and, and Oberon as we begin this spring and summer season. I'd like to thank Pastor Millard Southern from, from Allen Chapel AME, who single-handedly sought grants to bring in the Baylor Project to Kalamazoo. Baylor Project is, is an amazing jazz group from New York who have, who have won an NAACP Image Award and who have six Grammy nominations. And they came and over the weekend did a master class for students in KPS with music. And he's, and Millard is going to continue to work with those students throughout the summer with, with creating a jazz class for those kids. And then there was a concert over here at First United Methodist yesterday that just blew everyone in there away. He continues to believe that music is a great equalizer, that music brings people together, and that especially jazz can bring people together from all parts of our community. So thanks to Millard for, for really making that happen in our community. They loved Kalamazoo. They loved our hospitality. They loved our city. And they want to come back. Few other things. What we're talking about, and Commissioner Decker talked about it, but this level of trust. As Commissioners, because we're not boots-on-the-ground daily in City Hall and working with all the departments, we put our trust in the leadership of the city. And especially, so we voted on the consent agenda. We voted on bridge safety issues, things that are going to be, be taken care of, projects for 2026. And we have to trust those engineers that are looking into that and keeping our bridges safe and our roads safe for all of us. We trust the engineers that are working on wastewater. They're looking at, at ways to figure this out because God knows I certainly can't. I have to put my trust in the people that do that for a living. And so, and my trust and my gratitude. And one thing I just want to mention, 99.39% compliance with wastewater treatment regulations. Thank you. That's phenomenal. That is a level of excellence that the City of Kalamazoo should strive for in everything. We trust our Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety to keep us safe. We were privileged as, as a commission to sit with an update from Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety about what they're doing on behalf of this community with transparency. Please go to the website. Go to the Kalamazoo Public Safety website. There are all kinds of ways that you can find out what's going There are all kinds of ways that you can find out what's going on with gun violence, with group violence, with all kinds of statistics. You can report an issue, so they want to know. They want to engage with you. We found out all the fun things that are happening with the community policing officers and, and their new training and, and their new jurisdictions in the city, about the staffing changes they've made. We put our trust in these people, and yes, we should put our trust in these people. The community service team that is working with the homeless, that is working to identify them, help them and move them forward in their journeys here in the, in the city. We're going to be looking forward to the My90, which is, which is a community engagement tool where you can report about your interactions with, with, with the officers in the city. They want to know. They want to know, and that's holding themselves accountable. And so then we, we should trust them. There's a real-time crime center there. These projects and, and the projects that we're building, these, these were all updates that we got, the projects that are happening to keep the people of Kalamazoo in, safer, and they will continue to serve the people of Kalamazoo. We put our trust in KidNet. We put our trust in the people, in, in Meg and her team to identify those who, who, who want and need the dollars and are working with the children and the youth of Kalamazoo. And so we, we put our trust in them. We put our trust ultimately in the city staff to carry out what it is that we have said that we want to do in our priorities, and they do that on a regular basis, and I want to thank them for it. And I, I just think that, just sitting up here and, and being able to say that is, is a blessing, and I, I appreciate everyone that works on behalf of the people of Kalamazoo in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Prado?
Nothing to deny, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. So once again, we've reached the end of a business meeting here. Lots of topics, almost overwhelming from one end of things to another. Talking about sludge, talking about young people, talking about working together, talking about aspirations, all those, all those great, great things. And I, I just want to remind, I guess, the community, and I know that we know this well, is that this community work, we are just one part of that. And if we ever start to think we're, we're the folks that do that, you know, we lead that, I just want to remind us, you know, we don't. And we are embedded, we live in a, in a community. And just over the last, what, few days, even this weekend, we were at multiple events. I mean, you see Walked In Homelessness, HRI, Saturday Morning, a presentation that involved our sustainability folks, but somewhere from Ann Arbor, talk about that, the library. Of course, Miller Southern, his work bringing a Baylor Project, fantastic thing. All things, none of these, this, this is all work of community that's going on. Our DDA Board met this afternoon, trying to figure out downtown events, keeping downtown vibrant, had downtown business representatives, all volunteers now, care a lot about our community, show up for that. Jen from Son of the Zoo showed up, all had comments. And there's just so much going on, and that's what makes the community work. People who care and step forward and do that work. I want to recognize something else here that I'm, don't think we're going to say anything about probably before it opens, but just remind people that there's a nonprofit entity called Helping Hands, which is going to be opening its doors here in April, right downtown, where the Secretary of State used to be, over in the parking ramp. And an individual who's actually a full-time public safety officer, Glenn Hawkins, is very much a part of organizing that. His, thank you, Mrs. Hawkins. He has encouraged his mother to come back out of retirement and help basically run that process there. If you walk, you know, across from what were former Royal Street Market and look in the windows, you can see where all that build-out is happening, and the, they intend to be a free clinic, free health clinic. And I know, I'm not certain of the date, but they will be opening up here in the month of April is what their target is, early, as I understand it. So amazing work. All those are organizations doing work, but as we work our way all the way back, you know, what's the foundation for this work? And we touched on a little bit with the mom, neighborhood mom that you talked about, Commissioner Juarez, is that it's families, and it's people treating each other as family and doing that work. And I, and I want to recognize someone who passed recently in Kalamazoo, Melvin Alfred, Carolyn Alfred's husband. And a person who was very devoted to his family, did family work. As a matter of fact, you know, a lot of time what he was doing is supporting his wife, who spent a lot of time in the public sphere and on the county commission. And so we have lost a man who was one of those foundational people in town. And I just want to say we, we recognize that. I know the Alfreds have just gone through that, his wife Carolyn, and also his sons, Eric and, and Melvin Dwayne. Right there at the core in the neighborhoods, in the families, that's, that's where all this work is built. Lastly, Go Phoenix High School tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, we're pulling for you. I love you, Kalamazoo, we adjourned.